Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd. Could we please stand for the pledge?
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just moving ahead, I don't have any chairman announcements for tonight underneath Citizens' Forum. I think Lisa?
Why didn't you pronounce my last name?
Mozinski.
Mozinski, for the record. You know what I mean? I figured you would name an address, you know what I mean, to help the minotaur, but...
Some people go by one name.
Yeah, you know?
Everybody knows you as Lisa.
Lisa Mozinski, 6th York Street.
I'm here tonight just to give you an update on the museum on Main Street. And so if you could take one and pass it around, we have brand-new brochures for the event. And the grand opening is Saturday, September 13th, so I hope you all can make it. We've invited Senator Fatman and Representative McKenna, among others, and Chamber of Commerce, and our partners will be there. As you can see, we've reached out to several entities to partner with us for this occasion. And you also see that there's a program inside with different things going on. The Telegram and Gazette is interested in talking about, talking to the, our archivist at the library for the event on the 25th, because that is a discussion, a presentation she's going to give about an 1840 presidential banner for William Henry Harrison. So when you walk in the library, it's hanging up on the wall and nobody knows this. They're going to take it down and they're going to tell us about it, because it's cloth, it's hand-painted, it's definitely a folk art piece, to say the least. So you see the other sponsors here, different things. Program continues to build, and the hours are Tuesdays, 10 to 6, Wednesday and Thursday, 10 to 4, and Saturday, 10 to 3. As I mentioned before, there will be a volunteer or two monitoring the exhibit, just to make sure everything stays well, which is down at the municipal center. I'm sorry, at the gym, where everybody goes to vote. So there will also be additional signage to make sure everybody knows easily where to go to find the exhibit. And part of what we're doing with the partnership is we're going to have at least one or more tables, so that our partners can put out literature, sign-up sheet, et cetera, in order to build their own capacities, because we are expecting many, many people to come by. And so what I wanted to do also is, I saw later on the agenda, you have plans evolving for the 250th celebration, so if there's something about that, or some way we can ask people to sign up, or do anything like that, you're more than welcome to put out a page or two, so that people can be like, "Oh yeah, you know? I forget, I'm not going to have any time in June or July, but I'll sign up now," and then you can harass them for the rest of the day. So we'll build, we'll build capacity.
Excellent.
And then, so along that line, lastly, I also want to mention, we have, in the future, next May, gotten another grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council, or Coalition, and that's for a celebration of Douglas patriots around Memorial Day next year. So we can highlight the folks, mainly men, who served in the Revolutionary War, but also tell the story of how this community gave a lot more than just soldiers, that they also provided food, and blankets, and other commodities that helped sustain the revolution. So we hope to tell that story also with some possible cemetery walks, so we can point out where different people are. Just briefly, that we've gotten publicity ongoing. We got the article on the front page of the Blacksmun Valley Tribune, or in the Adult Social Center newsletter, et cetera, et cetera. There'll be more coming. And we'll have a lot of social media going on as well. So, any questions, or?
Fantastic job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
To make this all happen. There are only a couple of communities that are able to...
Six total.
Yeah.
And in fact, Ashby is just finishing up, and Ashby's on the other side of the state, to the north of us, and they will be sending the exhibit down to arrive here on Monday. And we have a crew who will unload it, and then we'll figure out what day we'll assemble the whole thing. And by magic, it will all appear. So we look forward to seeing you all. We encourage you to pass the word, friends, family, et cetera, any other organizations. If, and we're also working with the schools, because this is a fantastic opportunity to have a short field trip to see a Smithsonian exhibit, and get the kids out of the school building for a day.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, next up, entertain a motion to open the public hearings.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion by Mike, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0, good deal. All right, next up is the Grill on Main, a one-day alcohol license for the Oktoberfest. Possible votes?
Hello.
Hi. Just looking to get our one-day liquor license for the Oktoberfest.
Can you just introduce yourself for the minotaur?
Yeah, I'm Chris R, I'm one of the owners of the Grill on Main. Again, we're just here to look to get our one-day liquor license for Oktoberfest.
Question from Matt.
Yep.
Matt, do we, don't we typically have something on here related to the liquor license on the certificate of insurance? No? No. If it is, Lisa will tell you.
Okay.
I'm assuming it's all in order, because she put the packet together.
Yeah. So it's not your first rodeo, you've been here a couple times now, and each and every time has been more successful than the past, the last?
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. Any other comments? All good?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Motion by Mike, second by Hal, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, is anyone in the crowd that wants to weigh in?
Were they premature?
It might have been, but it's okay.
It's all right.
Are we good, Tony?
We're good.
All right.
He would have stopped me.
Right, Tony?
So I would make a motion, in the interest of time and support, to grant the Grill on Main a one-day alcohol license for the Oktoberfest activity taking place in October.
Second. All right, motion by Tim, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0, we're good. Thanks for your time. It's coming for us.
Thank you.
An open hearing on each one, though?
No, 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 just, she'll...
Next up?
Oh, actually...
Because he closed the public hearing?
Well, do it again. This is Chairman, I make a motion to open a public hearing for the Whitensville Fish and Game Club Annual Field Day, one-day alcohol license, one-day entertainment license.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Good evening, once again, Matt Burbank.
Okay.
Presenting up at the Fish and Game.
September 20th?
And grillers every year, annual fundraising for the club, you know?
Good. And it's targeted for September 20th?
Yeah, with a rain date of the following Saturday, so we don't have to do what we did two years ago, just to cover our butt, if possible.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
I'm trying to read the crowd. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Ross, all in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application and one-day entertainment license for the Fish and Game Club on Saturday, September 20th, with a rain date of September 27th for their annual field day fundraising event.
All right, motion by Tim, seconded by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. All right, appreciate your time.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
All right.
I know everything else.
That's the only...
Yeah, that's a public hearing.
I don't want to get into that.
All right, next up on our agenda is the Douglas Common Preservation Society's second annual scarecrow contest and event. Possible votes?
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
So we are here before you for Alden Pareski, Douglas Common Preservation Society, 76 Northwest Main Street, Douglas, Mass.
Bonnie Lapage, Douglas Common Preservation Society, 39 Maple Street, Douglas.
Thank you.
So we're here tonight because we are hoping to do the second annual scarecrow contest. It's the same venue as last year, only we had some learning points from last year, so this year we're making it more organized, and the biggest issue is traffic control. But the, the event is basically open to all the Douglas residents, and they get to create their own scarecrow, display it on the common. They have two days to set it up, and we have scheduled set-up times.
Okay.
So there'll never be more than 20 cars at the common at one time. And each person has one hour to do their setup. So when I talked to Adam, he, Erno, he said that we could fit 10 cars on one side of the street, and then the pastor of the first congregational gave us permission to park 10 within their parking lot. So even if we were to have 160, which we was cut it off before then, it would never be more than 20 people parking at one time. And that was the biggest issue last year. Everything else went pretty smoothly. But we are, we also listened, we're making it voting for or by the general public, as opposed to a panel this year of judges, and that way it takes away any subjectivity by people associated with putting on the event. So no, no individual category, it's just favorite scarecrows, and the top three favorites get prizes. We have eight different sponsors. Actually, we have more. We have 11.
And growing, right?
No, we're, that's it for now.
That's it, okay.
Because what we're doing is, we're giving them the opportunity to get their name and their logo on any of the promotional materials, so we had to get that ready to go in time. So we're just looking for permission. The display would run from September, October 4th, rather, until November 9th.
8th, it says in the packet.
8th, I'm sorry. They have to get them down by the 9th. Display is through the 8th. Thank you for correcting me on that. What we do for takedowns, we give them two days to take them down, and again, that avoids having everybody there at one time with a big rush. Bonnie, anything to add?
I don't think so, I think we've covered everything. We did, as Lynn said, take into account comments that people made last year, especially the parking. I believe we have addressed that, and there was, there was some concern about the voting, but I believe we have fixed that, too. Alyssa Gannatic, who is also on our committee as a member of the Board of Directors, is going to be working on online voting, and also a QR code, she's going to be setting that up. So it should be easy just to do it that way, so.
And what we'd like to do with the QR code is to have, you know where we put the banner, the recognition banner each year? With, in the same spot, on the same size board. We'd like to have the announcement of the contest with a QR code right there, so people can vote on the spot, they can walk around, do the different scarecrows, and then go over and take advantage of having that right there. So we'll be a little more up-to-date on the way things are done. But it's, it's a very popular event, we've had nothing but fantastic reviews, and people excited about having this again this year. And we have more and more people coming out who were not part of it last year, so we have a lot of new people who are interested. How many do we have? Right now, we have 23.
23 entries?
Who entered.
Okay.
Waiting for final approval tonight.
How many did you have last year?
Last year, we ended up with a total of 52 entries, but 50 scarecrows, two didn't show. But for this year, that was, that was a huge response for a first-year event.
Yeah, that's excellent.
But good for the community, all the feedback says it's community-building, and it's good for families, it's a family fun type of period. And the viewing takes place, I live up the street, like three-quarters of a mile from the common, so I drive by that all the time. And during that display period last year, there would be anywhere from like four cars to 12 cars, and people wandering around with their cameras, taking pictures, and the little kids just really into the different scarecrows. It was really fun.
I just want to add that also with our, our sponsors this year, we're able to provide more of the free T-shirts to the entrance. First 75, I believe?
Yes, first 75.
Will get two free T-shirts. Last year, I think we had limited it to 40?
We didn't, yeah, we didn't know what to expect last year, and we had only one sponsor, and we had small prizes, and we were fortunate to get a grant to cover $500 worth of T-shirts, so that's what we offered.
Right.
But this year, after last year's success, we went out and we got local sponsors, and their, their sponsor donations are covering the cost of T-shirts, so that more people can have them.
And they'll also have the opportunity to purchase more. If, say if they had small children, and they wanted, for each member of their family, they would have the opportunity to purchase more in advance, so.
And there are some teams where we actually have like four or five people. So, and then organizations like the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts want kids involved, they may want to have a number of T-shirts, so we will make them available for purchase.
I remember the event last year fondly, it was a wonderful little time. Was that the kickoff? That I was at? Is that happening again? And the reason why I say that is?
That was the setup day. We only had one setup day.
Okay.
And it was pure chaos, because everybody was there at the same time.
But now we've alleviated that.
And we've alleviated that issue by having it two days, five hours on Saturday morning in one-hour increments, up to 20 cars per hour. And then on Sunday, in the afternoon after church is out, so all the cars will be out of there, there'll be another three hours. And at the time that they enter, I, I am in touch with them, and I, what I do is I ask them what their preferred setup time would be, these are the options. And then if we get to 20, we cut it off, and they have to choose another time. Oktoberfest is the 4th, so what we're finding is, there's a pretty good division between, so far, between the 4th and the 5th, and a lot of people prefer the earlier hours on the 4th, so they can go to Oktoberfest. So it works out really nicely, there's no need for any town assets, we don't need any signage, we don't need any police, and it just, it's very, very organized. Keep it small per hour.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Good.
I remember driving by and said, "Who are all these people gathered, of the strange costumes?"
They've got no head.
No heads, right, they're still functioning.
It was definitely a lot of fun for the community.
As far as the display, people can come and go at...
And any, anytime they want.
Yeah.
Cool.
And I think in a lot of our newspaper articles, we've encouraged families to come and take pictures, and, you know, enjoy October in Douglas, so.
Is the current sign size big enough to recognize your 11 sponsors, or do you want to make that a little bigger?
Well, what we'll do on the signage that has the QR code on it, we'll have the sponsors on there, and their logos will be larger, larger, so they'll get plenty of recognition. They've also been recognized in the paper, newspaper articles, on Facebook, so the word is getting out.
So you're content, that's great.
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
We also have a couple of sponsors who have entered, they're, they're scarecrows in the contest, so they're getting into it.
All right, appreciate it. I think that's it. Any other?
No questions for me.
No questions, we're all good.
Move approval of the request of the Preservation Society for the annual scarecrow contest.
Second. All right, motion by Hal, seconded by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And don't go, go too far. So, next up on our agenda is the accept, donation acceptance for the painting of the gazebo located at the Town Common, and possible votes. So, in our packet, you want to step us through this, Lynn?
Sure. Thanks to a lot of community support, we were able to raise enough money to pay in full for the project of painting the gazebo, and that would be by Jason Baker. And Matt has signed the contract, or will be signing the contract with Jason, and Jason tells me that he's ready to start work tomorrow.
Okay.
No pressure.
But he comes really highly recommended, and has done work for the town before.
That's excellent.
I know he's going to do a great job for us, and the community is definitely behind all the work that needs to be done at the gazebo, and they're showing their support by making their donations, and we in turn are funding the accounts, so that we can pay for, in full for the project.
Okay.
Seems like a complete and total no-brainer. I'd make a motion that we accept the $2,100 donation made by the Town Common...
Douglas Common.
Douglas Common Preservation Society. Do you ever go by DCPS?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
There's some inside Douglas lingo there, for DCPS, I can't do it, for the repairs and maintenance of the gazebo located in the Town Common, and the painting of that gazebo.
All right, motion by Tim, seconded by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Time?
Thank you.
All right, next up, appointments and possible votes, you can take these one at a time or together. Economic Development Commission, Meg Schlesman, and Oktoberfest is Rhoda Hendrickson. So.
Rhoda's here.
Rhoda here?
No.
Nope, nope.
You want to do them separately, together?
We can, your pleasure, whatever.
Make a motion to appoint Meg Schlesman to the Economic Development Committee for a period of...
Three years.
Is it three years?
Yeah, I think it's a three year.
Yeah, three years.
Second.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move into the next one.
Sure.
Make a motion to appoint Rhonda Hendrickson to the Oktoberfest Committee, and I would assume that's for also a period of three years.
Yep. Second.
Okay, motion by Mike, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0, good. All right. Next up on the agenda is the vote for land use cons, firm, and council. I know at our last meeting, we had the pleasure of interviewing three possible candidates. We think we're ready for a vote, or?
I'm ready for one.
Thoughts?
I don't know how everybody else feels.
Yep.
Think we have to, right?
Yeah, I think we're at the, the line.
Need to.
Yeah, so.
Do you want to just go around the table and pick who, who?
All right, they...
You want, or, yeah, what do you want to do?
I'll leave it open, I mean, we could have a discussion on the three candidates, thoughts, I guess, who they feel came in first, or who came in second, I think, maybe you can go that way. You want to lead us off?
If nobody minds.
Right, the left.
Given the three candidates that we had come in before us at the last, last meeting, I believe, I would be in favor of the, I believe it's the second candidate, which, Toomey, is that Toomey?
Murphy Hesse Toomey.
Murphy Hesse Toomey. I've had this concern for a while, that we haven't been getting the service that we needed from the current land council, that's why I've expressed an interest in exploring this to start with. I did like the responses that we got on turnaround time for decisions, anywhere from two to five days, two to seven days versus 30 days, it's not fair to the applicant. The other gentleman that we both struggle with, trying to get a word in edgewise, I would choose to pass over that one. So my, my particular thoughts would be with Toomey and whoever it is.
Anybody else, any other thoughts?
That was my decision also, Murphy Hesse Toomey.
Feel comfortable with him?
Plus on my list.
I concur.
You concur?
With that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was definitely two viable candidates I felt stood out, but I do think maybe it's time to make a change at this time, because just what I expressed in the interview process, the time on the decisions is, is the crucial part, because the applicant waits and waits and waits. I did go through and look at past, how long decisions were taking, and it was, sometimes it was quite a few, you know, longer than necessary, and after this, after the applicant gets their decision, they still have a 20-day appeal period, so on top of that, so. All right, I would, Tim, anything else?
I'll be, it won't be problematic, I can count the votes on the vote. I will say, I spent a fair amount of time this weekend thinking about this particular vote, knowing full well that Jay Tallerman had been our council, and trusted council for a number of years, spoke with a number of volunteers in town, some had concerns with Jay's performance, others felt very strongly that Jay had done a really good job for us. Recogn...
Just an echo.
Okay. Recognizing the, the long service that he had done there, I reached out to Jay and kind of got a feel for really what had happened, and his firm had grown, and there's growing pains with that growth, and sometimes there's ramifications of that growth, and that might be what today's vote is. However, I came here thinking that we had given Jay another shot, and that he was deserving of at least another year of service to the town.
So entertain a motion, I guess, go forward with recommendation, could do roll call vote on, or you want to make a motion?
For Toomey.
For Toomey?
Toomey, I don't remember the rest of the name.
I've got it here.
Murph.
Yeah.
You know, they battle so hard to be named partners and firms, and then?
No one knows.
Nobody remembers the names. Murphy, Hesse, Toomey.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can go, and we can go through that process, you just basically did it, but I would make a motion to appoint Murphy, Toomey, and whatever the rest of the other name is, for land council.
All right, motion by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Want to oppose?
Want to oppose?
And having said that, I think the candidate is outstanding, right? I don't think we're losing anything by his...
Tough choice.
Yeah.
No, it's more about the service to the town, it has nothing to do with personality, I actually like Jay a lot, and worked with him for the last 12 years, it's just the service that we're getting, is, if you want to spend another two seconds on this, one thing that he stressed at, we have a flat fee, but he's only serving basically the Board of, the zoning board, we meet twice a month, and a lot of times, we don't even have them come, so you're still paying that flat fee each month, versus these other applicants were an hourly fee, so, which are, the one that we chose is relatively close to what his rate would be.
Yep.
That's all I got on that. The environmental specialist, maybe longer presentation, very strong environmentally, but that's only part of our, and I thought they were strong on that, but maybe not as strong of the other skills required. But they're three good firms, no question.
Nothing says that Jay comes back in the future.
Yeah, it gives us a chance, and it actually helps the town long-term, where, you know, it can be opened up in a year, and things need to go in a different direction from there, so. Okay. Okay, let's move forward. Number 11, open the fall special town meeting warrant.
Make a motion to open the warrant.
Okay, motion by Mike, seconded by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Five, nothing. We open the warrant. Next item up, number 12. CRG presentation with a proposed request for establishing a new overlay district in Douglas and possible votes.
You have Frank on it.
Oh, yeah, we got Frank.
Pacunas.
Pacunas?
Yes.
I can spell it. Just go with all the letters.
Can anybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Show of hands?
Yeah.
Am I good?
Yeah, good.
Okay, great. Okay, can I, would you like me to start?
I just want the two gentlemen who are with us just to introduce themselves for our minute taker.
Sure. Dan Bailey, I'm a land use attorney at Pierce Atwood in Boston and working with CRG on this project.
Okay.
And Todd Maury, Principal Appeals Associates, also will be working on this project.
Perfect.
And before we start, Frank, I need to ask you a favor. For some bizarre reason, I don't know what's going on, my computer is not picking up the wifi and things. Can you open that PowerPoint that I had sent you on Friday?
I've grown, I've grown in technical frustration already. Yeah, I can't, hold on a second.
Okay.
I see you on the Zoom. Would it help if I gave you a screen share?
It's actually not the screen share. It's, there's something going on with my computer, so it won't.
Probably do it.
Connect to my online services, so. I even brought it on a thunder, for my backup.
Next time we'll bring the boards.
Yeah, the boards never fail me.
Boards never fail.
This is raining out.
And if you bring the boards, the computers always work.
That's right.
What does it been from the, mine still says draft on it, but that's from the 29th, correct?
Uh, yes. Friday.
Bear with me. Dan, I see Nadine is...
Nadine is not related to me.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
No pressure, Frank, no pressure.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
Probably playing Donkey Kong or something, got sidetracked.
Everybody's not staring at the screen, don't worry about it.
There we go, Frank's slowly getting there.
What do you see?
There we go. Yep. Now if you just...
Dan, turn it to slideshow and you're good.
Yeah, there you go. Slide show, perfect. All right, we have a presentation. There we go.
All right, now back to the normally intended program.
Yep.
Okay, well, I'm actually impressed with myself. Okay, good evening, everybody. And my apologies, first of all, for not being there tonight, but I had a series of travel mishaps today that I could probably write a book about. But nevertheless, my name is Frank Pitkinus, and as most of you know, I hope, I represent a company called CRG. We specialize in the development warehouse type facilities nationally. And we also happen to be the same guys that built that warehouse down on Gilboa Street near Route 146. So also appearing with me, obviously Todd already introduced himself, but I want to remind everybody that he was the brains behind the site design on our Gilboa project, and he'll continue as our project engineer on this particular project. And Dan is new to the mix. He's with Pierce Atwood, as he had mentioned, and Dan will be helping us out on land use issues and entitlements. And that's if the project I'm about to tell you about comes to fruition. So relating to this project, we have the subject site under contract. And a few months ago, we were approached by a very large and very reputable company with an interest in owning a 1.7 million square foot facility on the subject site. Now, at the moment, I'm bound by confidentiality, and I can't yet divulge their identity, but I certainly can pretty soon. And what I mean by that is, in a matter of weeks, maybe less than two weeks, I could probably tell you who they are. They'd just like to get through a couple of meetings internally before we really tell you who they are. Nevertheless, they're a very reputable household name. Here and now, however, I can point out at least two attractive benefits. Number one, the project is expected to create more than 1,000 new permanent jobs. And number two, the project will have the obvious benefit of increasing tax ratables within the town. So, you know, that really brings me to why we're here tonight. This company's operation and the method of storage for this type of facility requires a building taller than what's allowed in the current zoning ordinance. And because of that, the project is, that particular aspect of the project is really important to them. So we figured we'd get the ball rolling very early, as soon as possible. Obviously, we'll still complete all necessary approval steps like site plan review and CONCOM and MAS DOT. But this is really our first step in trying to make this project work, and it's an important one at that. So if you don't mind, Dan, I'm going to kind of hand it off to you and let you talk about the request. And I hope I can advance to the next slide.
Okay.
There you go.
Yep. Thank you, thank you, Frank.
So what this slide shows is, you know, the site, which is the pine, sand, and stone facility, and a couple of budding parcels on Route 146 north of Gilboa Street. The existing zoning district is the industrial zoning district. This is all in the industrial zoning district. And, you know, it's a sand and gravel operation, as you all know. As Frank mentioned, the proposed use would be a 1.7 million square foot state-of-the-art distribution warehouse. And what we're thinking about in terms of the zoning amendment would be to create a very simple overlay district that is limited to the site, that allows warehouse height up to 85 feet. I think current limitation is 55 feet in that district. And Todd will get into a little bit more of what that means, because it doesn't mean 85 everywhere. It's more at the back of the site and it's pretty well screened. So yeah, the proposed building, it's set back from the public roadways and topography will accommodate that 85-foot warehouse. And, you know, that's, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions. You know, I'm very familiar with the zoning amendment process, not in Douglas, but I've done it in several other towns. Mr. Davis is familiar with one of those places. I did it, because I did it with him. So, you know, we'd be looking, I think, for a special town meeting sometime in the next couple, well, you know, you've got to go through the process of planning board hearings, and I'm sure you have finance commission and all those types of things. But we'd be looking to get that done this fall, you know, maybe November.
It's not unusual to the site. We're granted two different variances to current business there. At 90 feet was the last one. The structure is 86 feet tall. That was back in '21, I believe.
So consistent.
Yeah, I'm happy to turn it over to Todd to give you a little bit more specifics on the proposal.
Yeah, Todd, if you wouldn't mind, and cue me along as you talk about these slides. But let's start on the site plan and then sort of go to the elevations and the sightline drawings.
Yep. So, you know, as we mentioned, really the key thing that we need to solve at this early stage is the building height. So the building that you see up there is what they're going to propose. And roughly 300 feet in from the left-hand side of the building, it changes in elevation. The side of the building closest to Gilboa Street will be about 43 feet at the parapet on the edges. And that rises up to, I think it's 48 or 50 feet at the peak, okay? It is a flat roof, but they still have a slope on it. So if you think of the building that we recently completed over on Gilboa, Cubes of Gilboa, the parapet comes up and there is a peak. Since these roofs are wide, that difference is quite dramatic. Can you go back one, Frank? Okay, that's a good one to leave. So in this slide here, the green area would be the taller area. The kind of orange peach area would be the lower area. The taller area is roughly 68 feet at the parapet, and that rises up to about 77, 78 feet in the middle. The reason we've asked for 85 is we don't have an HVAC design for this yet. We don't know exactly where the mechanical units will be.
Yep.
And we don't know exactly how tall. So we wanted to make sure we left ourselves a little bit of breathing room to get those in there. We're aware that here in Douglas, your building commissioner will view the rooftop mechanicals as part of the building height. So we want to make sure that whatever we come in with for a number, we can get underneath that.
Okay.
As I mentioned, it's not 85 feet all the way across. So there's that center spine that's about 77 feet at the peak, 77, 78 feet at the peak. Like I said, it's sloped back down to roughly 68 on the parapet, so you can visualize that. This slide also, and we can get you electronic copies of these slides too, if you need them. But this slide also attempts to show some of the distances that we'd be off from the public streets. So starting up on the upper left-hand side, where basically where the town line crosses Gilboa Street, or where we have the truck entrance, that darker entrance, we're just over 1,800 feet away from that, where that building rises up. So to give it a little bit of perspective, that's a quarter mile plus almost two more football fields. So it's quite a ways back. As you start to swing around, you'll see another blue line that goes up to that corner. That one is about 1,270 feet or just under a quarter mile. And the closest point we get to any public right-of-way is off Route 146. And that's about between 600 and 700 feet away from that point there. I'm assuming that you're all very familiar with coming down Route 146 from Wester. You recall that area is pretty heavily screened. There is a gap in there, and we actually took a picture of the gap. And now you can flip forward one, Frank? So we have four visuals that we'd like to show you here. Starting from the right, heading to the left are the next four slides you're going to see. And it's basically just, we had our architect drop that building in based on some pictures. I think they're actually Google Earth shots that he probably took. But we tried to get the gap on 146. The next one is right as the ramp starts to peel off of 146. The third one will be right at the bottom of the ramp from 146, intersecting with, I guess it's Lackey Dam Road, where in Uxbridge at that point. And then the fourth one will be as you're passing in between the two main driveway entrances, not too far from the existing pine, sand entrance. Go to the next one, Frank? So this one here is from 146. As you can see, it's, we tried to hit that gap that's in there. In the wintertime, you can see a little bit into the site. This time of year, I looked at it coming down here again tonight. You can't see anything in that site at all. That's essentially what this slide shows, that once you drop that building in there, where we think those finished floors will be, there's no visual. Go to the next one. This was actually the only one of the four renderings that we have where you can see the difference in the building height. And again, this is, you can see where the truck is, is coming down off the ramp, headed towards Lackey Dam Road. This is actually taken from Route 146, looking into the site. As we go from here into the site, there'll be a fairly large retaining wall. I think it'll be somewhere between 20 and 25 feet tall. We'll have a row of trees planted on top. And then you can see the two buildings. So off to the left a little bit, you can see, just barely see the top of the lower building. As you move to the right, right in the center of this shot, you can see where that wall kicks up. And that's the high point, or the high corner of that building. Go to the next one, Frank? Again, this is down at the bottom of the ramp, where the ramp intersects with Lackey Dam Road and Uxbridge, looking back up towards the site. The only portion of the building you can see from this perspective is the lower portion, the portion that would comply with your current zoning. Go to the last one, Frank? And this is, this driveway that you can see in the foreground here is the existing pine, sand driveway, looking into that site. Again, that building is set quite far back, and the only face you can see of that is the lower face. The other thing I want to add about these renderings is that these were done just with some very, very basic landscaping on there. This, if this project moves forward, pretty much everything you'd see in this foreground would also be landscaped. We do a lot of our stormwater management in that area, and of course, put a lot of trees and shrubs and things around that. So there'd be even more of a visual buffer. So the site's fairly unique in that it gives us the opportunity to stay way off these roads with the building itself. And then the way we're going to have to grade this and design it, we'll have that wall that'll come up that we can plant right across the top. So actually, the closer you get to the site, the more that even screens that building. Because your line of sight, as you try to look up over the top of the wall, pushes you up even higher. So, you know, we think this is a pretty unique opportunity to be able to screen a building of that mass.
And the trees will only grow from there?
The trees will only grow from there.
Yeah. So it's probably a good, that's probably a good place to pause, Todd, and solicit questions from anybody.
Is this building all in Douglas?
The building is 100% Douglas.
Does this lock?
Right there. That one's good, Frank, because that has the property, or the town lines red.
Yep.
Is a considerable amount of land in probably other towns that I shouldn't be aware of, should be concerned about. But do you lock them? Do you block them with this building? If we wanted to provide access to land beyond you?
Such as out through?
I would imagine just, would that be northwest of that building?
We're going towards North Street, you mean?
Yeah.
Has to be northwest.
Yeah, there is a very large wetland complex. You can just see at the top of this, upper left, I'm sorry, upper right of this screen here. So yeah, to get up to North Street, you'd have to cross through those wetlands. I've actually walked from the site up to North, or actually, North Street down to the site, and then made the mistake of walking back up through. It's pretty rugged.
Okay.
Did you hear it?
No, I didn't. It was early spring and it was awfully wet, I will tell you that, though.
Truck traffic will be handled in what way?
Truck traffic will come off the site and go direct to 146. And if needed be, I mean, if you recall, we made geometric shapes on the driveway up of the Cubes of Gilboa to force them that way.
Okay. And the request for the overlay, it's pretty common in other communities, can you just, for education, for folks? What other communities have an overlay, such as?
Oh, I can do that.
Just a few. Just to educate folks, that's all, you know what I mean?
Dan got a little, yeah, Dan got perky on that.
Yeah, he's like, oh. Should I pull off the big list?
It's actually become, I would say, in the last 15 years, a really popular way to encourage economic development because it's somewhat project-directed, as opposed to zoning generally is, you know, a bunch of uses, dimensions. It's, this is much more, okay, somebody's thinking about, and it's particularly popular with mixed use. Because of course, a lot of times you've got residential and commercial, and they don't live together in your typical zoning district. So you marry them with an overlay district, which gives you, you can still do anything that's allowed in the underlying zoning. But then the overlay, usually it's some sort of development bonus, you know, and there'll be site plan review. And, you know, typically, you know, so the planning board will have an opportunity to review it, make sure all the traffic works, all the, you know, lighting works, no spill-over, landscaping, all of the usual things that you would expect. As far as communities that have one, in Westwood, I did one a dozen years ago. That has been built out as University Station, which is an almost 2 million square foot mixed-use development. I'm working on one right now in Newbury Port on the waterfront that the city has wanted to get done for a long time. But there's a real push now to get it done with the current mayor. We're working on one in Quincy. I even wrote it down, trying to think, oh, you might ask me about this. You know, I know, I'm pretty sure Norwood has one.
Yep.
So, yeah, they've become more and more popular because they're targeted, you know. One of the hard things about zoning is when you make a kind of a big change in a use, there are unintended consequences. And with an overlay, we feel like we can do a pretty good job of explaining, particularly in towns with open town meetings, you know, that no, this is not the potential parade of horribles. We've really thought about it, and it's going to be kind of like this. We've really thought about it and it's going to be kind of like this.
Yeah, and this card, as what Mike highlighted, there was two already granted height variances that were granted.
Yep.
So it's nothing.
And that was for 90 feet, so.
For 90 feet, yep.
A little bit less, but it's still within the same. And it's a good fit for that area. It's not like you're trying to put it downtown.
Yeah, I think step in the building the way you did, it's, you know, aesthetics, you know, it's going to do, you know, from the street and stuff like that with trees, you're not going to see the back aesthetics and stuff like that, and that height difference is really not going to matter too much.
There's worse things than seeing economic development in town. I have no issues.
Not seeing it?
Yeah, I have no issues with this.
Can we move you to some of the suburbs closer to Boston?
Be nice if any trucks were considered garaged in the town to pick up the extra revenue.
Not with the main plate.
Yeah. And that works well for multifamily.
Yeah. You want a motion on this?
We need a motion.
Says possible votes, you need one.
Yeah, so you are going to need to vote to send it to the planning board for their process.
Okay. With the eventual inclusion in the special town meeting in November.
Okay. So this is already scheduled. I don't know if the applicant was aware. We have a standing special town meeting.
Okay.
And it's going to be.
November 17.
November 17, a little bit later this year because we try not to mess with the Veterans' Day holiday. So the warrant was open tonight. It'll be closed probably the first week of October. The planning board can have its hearing the night of town meeting, as long as they report on the floor the outcome of their hearing. So we're not really too worried about the timing.
Yeah, and, you know, we'll work with the planning board and planning board staff on the actual, you know, drafting. Apparently with your new land use council.
Yeah, test them, will you?
I actually know, I know them very well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, everybody you talked about tonight's really good, so.
Yeah. Excellent. Go ahead, Mike.
All right.
Make a motion to forward this to the planning board, CIG's presentation for a proposal requesting and establishing a new overlay district in Douglas.
Motion by Mike, second and a half. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect.
That's what you needed.
That's it.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you, everybody. Wish I could be there. I'll see you next time, I promise.
Frank, you did a hell of a job with the.
We need somebody who can run the technical end of this, Frank. Thanks, Frank.
That's a little scary.
All it was needed for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, 250th anniversary celebration and discussion possible votes. I put this on the agenda because I think we've been talking about it, you know, off and on, and just want to have a discussion so we can kind of probably keep it on our agenda, so we can kind of maybe look to form a committee and.
Yeah, so the committee has preemptively been formed and had two applicants come today.
See what happens when it goes on the agenda?
What's next, the national?
And now you're going to sign up, you're going to sign up.
Hey, you gave him a job, he's on it.
Not all. So, just for a little cutback, a little sycophantic in myself, I've been back and forth in touch probably for the past couple of months, just throwing ideas back and forth. Honestly, I didn't really know where to start on this thing. With some help from her and Polk and the project, and getting it on the agenda, we figured we just, it's time, it's more than time. So we're probably going to start small. I know I got to talk with the town clerk and coordinate meeting times and whatnot, but we're going to start with probably three people just for the first one or two meetings to kind of get organized and figure out how we're going to go with this. And probably take on two more. I know your mom showed some interest in.
She's got the science.
So encourage anybody that's interested to fill out an application, bring it up, we'll consider.
They can still participate in meetings.
Correct. We're very open, we're very open to public input, what people want to see, what they like to see. Just throw ideas at us so we can get something together. I don't know how big, how small, but we're going to try our best to make something happen.
You have the 200th anniversary exposes the resources to what was.
Yeah, so going back to 1996, when the town was 250. I participated in that, also my mother participated in that. So I've got a little bit of, we've got plenty of ideas. We just got to make them come to fruition, that's all.
That's good.
And what's real. You can dream this big, but what we really do, and forward type of thing.
Kind of strategize and lay it all out and.
The wheels are oiled and the cart is moving, so.
Anything else? I just, I know I've been meaning to put it on the agenda, it's not a request, but it's just because we had the forefront a couple of conversations and even tonight, Lisa.
Time go by, time go by, and today when I'm moving the calendar another month ahead, I'm like, man, this has got to, we got to roll this stuff.
All right.
In light of the fact that we got two applications today that he brought in, is that something we can move on tonight just to expedite the process, or do we put that on to the next meeting to officially form this committee?
Maybe in the next meeting we'll form it. What do you think?
Yeah, I don't have more information as far as, you know, meeting time and how many times a month.
Calendar's moved quick, that's.
Yeah, no, no. What do you think? We can form it after the next meeting and then even if we could vote on member, if you got members.
Yeah, because like I say, and maybe they can even be here.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to lose traction on it, you know? And then you have, like, maybe by then you'll have like a meeting time.
Correct.
And a schedule. We can go forth from there. I think that'd be good. Perfect. All right.
And I would make a recommendation to connect with Gene and find out what we should do for setting up a special account, specifically earmarked for that. I'm sure he'll be raising money and.
Yeah, his idea is a fundraiser.
And I just heard Tim say that he's going to kick it off with the first donation.
I will make a, in honor of the 250th anniversary, I will make a $250 donation to the effort.
So is that a challenge to the rest of us?
People donate what they can when they can.
I'll accept the challenge and I'll do it. I'll match your 250.
All right, so you get it right there.
I'll add in.
That's it. I won't, you know, let the board stand alone, so I'll throw 250 in as well.
Good.
As we're ready.
Well, you're donating your time, you can if you want, but you're going to be putting more than $250 worth of time into it.
Yeah. All right.
All right, so the 250 gold level sponsor has been created. There you go. Then we just need a big sign. No, just kidding.
Yeah, we'll get that on our next meeting, we'll form the committee and the hours and stuff like that, because I know the output, you know, I mean, a lot of people in public might want to jump in and attend and have ideas, so it'd be great. All right, next item on the agenda is the Board of Selectmen, policies and procedures first reading.
I have something in here about the tree. Is that part of the 250th?
Oh, I saw this. Oh, I'm sorry, I messed that up.
The thing is 45 feet tall.
Oh, come on up. Is that you?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
When we take that tree out of the, I mean, the telephone pole out of Rideout Road, maybe we could put a 45-foot tree there and play. That's only a joke, everybody.
I'm with the DAR, Captain Jobnapp chapter, and we do have a 250th committee. And we received this liberty tree proposal, and I would like to present it to you because we don't have the funds to fund it ourselves. I'm basically just going to read it. On July 4, 2026, America will be 250 years old. Before they stepped off the Mayflower on November 11, 1620, William Bradford required the male passengers to sign a compact guaranteeing to each other that they would make abide-by and enforce their own laws, thereby creating America's first constitution. America, the land of the free and the brave, was born that day. We want your community to be in America's 250th birthday landmark town and to place a Liberty Elm and plaque in a highly visible location near the town hall. America's 250 birthday Casperon plaque is 10 by 6 by 1/4, and preamble to the Declaration of Independence frame print for placement in the local town hall is 13 by 8. The cost for those is $325. And then America's 250th Liberty Elm tree is bagged and burlapped, loaded on a truck, preamble frame print for placement in the town hall. So they will have the Elm tree bagged and burlapped, ready for planting. Now, we thought about the common, but the common's getting pretty full. And then somebody else suggested the graveyard right across from the common, but, you know, that's why I'm here, just proposing it to the town to put in a Liberty Elm. That's it.
Good idea. Question is where, I think.
If you would entertain a thought, maybe we could task the newly formed committee in two weeks to look into this to see if there's something that would fit within what they're doing.
And it'd probably work with the.
It's got all the information.
Yeah, and I would probably just add to that, probably work with the tree warden based upon maybe, you know, ideal location and so it can be preserved. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it'd be more of a focus group on to see if it fits into their.
Yeah, if it's fixed underneath.
What they want to do with it.
Maybe the DOR should have representation on the committee too.
The cost of the elm is $1,585, so you've almost raised it.
Whoa, 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 you're already spending it.
Only if we go to Fox Court.
It's one thing to say it, it's another thing to have cash in hand.
That is a tree burlapped and.
Yeah, we all said it, but you have to get it out of our pockets.
Yeah, it's, you know what I mean?
It's a tree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, no, no, I appreciate it, and I think that's probably, what Mike has highlighted, I think it's going to be ideal to involve that committee for this purpose, as well as the tree warden for location. That's ideal, that would probably preserve the tree longer. You know, the, you know.
We're basically just handing it over to the committee.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and that would be, you know, something they can review and take a look at and, you know, amongst our cycles of meetings, but.
I don't know if there's an order by date or something like that, but even a thought, the first thought, if this, if the Riverwalk were to come.
Well, it's in Keene, New Hampshire, there's a phone number here. There's also Gmail address.
Yeah, yeah.
Thought, you know, far away, way far away with that, but this is just an idea where people can see it and appreciate it around this drive-by or 45 miles or.
Yeah, well, I think.
They do that on North Street.
It's like 45 is everywhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Minimum.
Okay, so let's, let's have your committee pick that up and, you know, work from there with the tree warden and stuff, but, you know, I think you've got some, there's a lot of options and locations that can.
So you already got money, you already got tasks, and you don't even have the committee yet.
All right. Well, I appreciate you coming, coming and sharing this with us, and, you know, Ross will be taking in our advisement and working from there.
And I'm glad I asked about it because she was sitting there patiently and then we skipped over it.
Well, I knew I was last because my husband looked it up. He's on the planning committee.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, all right, jumping back in, Board of Selectmen, policies and procedures first reading. I think we got some items that were, came in. I know I submitted something in. Mike, I think you've got something in here.
Mine's pretty easy, I can explain it really quick.
Yeah, sure, if you want to.
If you guys don't mind entertaining it. So on the second page, I highlighted the board through the town administrator. It's in section four, third paragraph. My proposal is to strike that out because under the Strong Administrators Act, that's no longer the case.
Okay.
All the other sections, I didn't change any wording at all in notes. You see below it, it's in bold and underlined, next page, bold and underlined. That's all actual words that were there. I just brought it out for us as a group just to reaffirm what we actually do here.
Okay.
The under section eight on page four, make liaison assignments as appropriate, assign responsibility of projects tasked to board members. I highlighted that because when I got on the board, it was kind of, and Tim unfortunately fell victim to it sometimes, like a little running joke, CRMPC, all right, Tim's not here tonight, he's on that, right? So it's fun, but it's not fun. And out of fairness to each, each one of us as members, we should refrain from doing that and just throwing people to the wolves and putting them in an awkward position. I would rather assign people as a group decision versus an individual thing.
That's fair. You looking to remove that section, the highlighted in page, page four? I'm just trying to follow, track you. The highlighted, you want to remove that?
So I put, I need further clarity after it, I think, but. Something, we've got three readings on it, so.
Yeah.
My goal is to get group approval, including the individuals. So for whatever reason, somebody doesn't make it, they doesn't get thrown on something that, now it's an awkward situation to say that, I don't have time to do that, or I don't have any interest in that or something like that. That's the whole purpose of me putting that in there. I think that's the only other change. Anything else, you'll see it, it's in bold. Again, it was just to bring it to the surface as to what I, what I see as some of our stronger responsibilities are.
Okay.
So that's all I have on that.
Okay. I know it's going to take us a few minutes to go through this. I think mine might be in the packet. I think the only, I had two, two things in here. Let me find them where they are.
Page three.
Oh, yeah, page three, at the top. I guess I should have, I thought I, I'll have to look. I kind of put underneath it, like the wire descriptions and stuff like that. So this was the first pass of, like, what we discussed about the cooling-off period and stuff like that, for both the town administrator eligibility to join the selectmen board, as well as a board of, a board member joining and stuff like that with the town cooling-off period that we discussed. So that was one, and I'll probably, I want to be consistent, I like, that was like an ad. And then the other one was, I think we discussed this, I striked it out. Let me find where that is. It's about the street names, yeah, and I put strikes as a remove in there. The reason why, and I wish those, I'll make sure, underneath it does have the explanation. So the explanation underneath removing the street names and stuff like that was that this is already, this section's already kind of handled with the ZBA board as well as the planning board, the street names, I think.
Yeah, ZBA, the new street names, I think just planning.
Well, I think in a 40B they would do it, wouldn't they? No?
No, I believe the applicant came in with those compass points and things like that.
Up and posed, yeah.
But that was also through the Board of Selectmen came up with that.
Okay.
The zoning board was only the oversight board for it, but the agreement was originally made through the select board, I believe.
Okay.
Grant's of the MOU.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what the thoughts are of the group, if we want to still have that or not, because what I was trying to avoid was.
Well, we haven't exercised that right to do that. It was just interesting to come out, so the, and I don't know what their process is and how they follow it. So what you, what you want to be cautious of is similar, similar names, or something that, it looked like it spelled differently but pronounced the same. It's going to really cause havoc with the emergency personnel.
Yeah.
So if they already do that, then I'm not. So if they already do that, then I'm not opposed to that. This was just something, because this came on, I had pointed at, I wasn't aware of the fact that we even did it, right?
Yeah, I, I know--
I'm not overly worried about that, the, going back to, I don't want to cut you off, stay, go and stay on that topic and I'll tell you what I thought about--
No, no, I know the, the Town Clerk tracks all the names of the streets, I know the Planning Board, you know, weighs in on the names for approval, and I was just trying not to have every--
Yeah, and there's been errors in the past of a street actually being called a street, and I don't think it was ever an approved street. I'm not going to get into what, what street it is, I think we all may know it, or some of us do. But the, whatever we end up doing with the street names, is I would want to, if we handed that and took that responsibility away from us, right? And I don't, I don't see why it wouldn't just remain in there, we could still go status quo as it's happening now, but you have the ability that if it gets silly at some point, this may have come about from Stonegate Estates, where their first proposal was Gun Gates.
Oh.
Okay, so there was some consideration and concern about offensive names. So just something you want to think about.
What is a gun gate?
Gun gate.
Yeah, what is it?
Gun.
I know, what is it? What is a gun gate?
Have no idea.
No idea.
Have no idea, but--
Throw the word gun in front of the gate. It's got really long driveway in a 50 cal.
Whatever, whatever they--
No, I mean, I'm all for it, I'm okay with keeping it.
It's just something to think about.
Undesirable ways.
The, the cooling off period, I don't have a problem with it either way, but I'm just going to add my two cents in, into it. The process in which this town goes through for hiring and appointing and things like that, it's pretty involved and it's always well-versed, as you have different people from different parts of the town, as well as Board Members, and sometimes even a, in special occasions, is a resident of the town that would be involved in the interview process. And I don't think the Administrator would, I know it's tempting and it's glorious, but I don't think that he would give up his career to be on our board to do that. Just a thought.
Yeah, well--
I know it happens in, in other towns, but I think they're, they're probably about 50 years behind us.
Yeah, again, I think the reason why I brought it up was, you know, the Paxton situation, as well as Dudley and some other towns that have seen concerns with that, and it just, that's--
That would never fly in here, just like the town meeting in Oxford that, that they went after the, the Town Administrator.
Yeah.
That would never fly in here.
No, I, so, no good discussion, I think--
But anyways.
Yeah, if there's any--
I'm not opposed to it either way, I'm--
No, no, I just--
Giving my opinion on it.
Yeah, just trying to get the thoughts, you know, appreciate you highlighting some things. Go through some revisions on this, if there's any other inputs, send them over to Lisa, we'll try to compile them all into it.
I think it'd be helpful to have one document.
Yeah.
And I have to apologize to everyone, I think I handed my notes to Les thinking I was going to let the new kid do my homework as he was making changes. Those notes got lost in the shuffle, I'll go back and read this for the 400th time. My only thought would be, we have to be careful, this is just a policy, we're not setting law or edict or in any way, shape or form. So maybe in that verbiage, I'm fine with the, the cooling off period, maybe we have to turn the, the language of shall.
Yeah.
And sure, we can come up with that.
No problem, yeah, it's all good, it's the first--
I'll try to explain it, what I meant on the appointments of fellow members of the Board.
Yeah.
And just have some sort of wording in it.
Yeah, I, I forgot my back, you know, the justification or thoughts and stuff like that, but, okay. We don't have any minutes for tonight, we can forward, number 16, the Town Administrator's report. Matt, you're up.
Well, I just got back from vacation today, so--
You're all trying to catch up.
Did you do that? Yeah, silly me. It wasn't vacation, it was staycation, six kids and a puppy. Puppy broke my thumb. Anyway, it's a long story. You heard that presentation tonight from CRG, and the proposal is very simple, and its scheme, right, it's to increase the height limit in a specific targeted area of town. There are some things I want to point out to people early in the process, and have it be part of their decision set as they go forward. One of those things is that this is a build-to-suit situation, and it is not a speculation situation. So CRG cubes at Gilboa was built on speculation. The industry had a standard template for a building that if you built it, you know, kind of like--
Field of Dreams.
Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. And that particular building is part of a sort of a complicated, it's not a bidding war, but there are interested parties, but there's always, well, can you add this, can you take this away, can, you know, how is this going to work? And then those internal corporate structures have had some scheduling issues in terms of their rollout of their expansion plans into the logistics field. So the longer the economy is less than certain, they get gun-shy about making their decisions. But what is proposed for pine, sand and gravel is a corporate entity that has already decided they want to be there. And building the warehouse that suits their needs means they will definitely occupy it once it is finished. So it is not the same kind of economic development path as the cubes at Gilboa, and that's an important distinction, because in terms of recognizing all of the revenue that we can from the site, it really comes down to the personal property tax, not the vehicles. So the vehicles will be apportioned, and that's typical for a very large corporation. And, you know, I think the conversations at the state level, everything that those of us with economic development backgrounds would remember, right? Sales tax treaty, you know, some other things they want from the state government, they're not really looking for from us. The rubber will hit the road for us with any development agreement that we pursue. And all negotiations are based on leverage. In this particular site, much of what is contemplated is as of right, so there isn't going to be a whole lot of approval checkpoints at the local level. Obviously, they have to comply with CONCOM, and they have to comply with Site Plan Review. Most of the issues that I would have emphasized in Site Plan Review, if the Planning Board ever dared to ask me what I think about it, is around landscaping and screening. And I think we had an awful lot of discussion tonight, but they've already planned for this, they don't want to be visible, which kind of fits in with the overall scheme of making them not visible. So in that, in this dynamic, you know, it's really more or less asking them to be good corporate citizens, and what is it that you want them to do, in addition to the landscaping and other things on their own property. So we may have a limited opportunity here to actually ask for all of those things. Hal and I have had this conversation before, I don't believe in extortion at all, you know, you, just do business, do the transaction, and follow your path and, and engage in your corporate economic activity without having to, you know, cough things up. Some of our neighboring, nearby communities, not neighboring, but nearby communities have gone through great lengths to get ball fields and, and all kinds of throwaway things, and the problem with that isn't that you don't need those things and you want them, it's that overall, the most expensive things that we have to fund as a community are our infrastructure, our roads, our utilities, and some of the things that, the buildings that house our functions, those are the really big expenses we face. So when we look at really significant economic players showing up, if you really want to give the taxpayer a break from the outset, focus any activity in terms of being part of the community on those things that will help the community be more cost-efficient going forward. So with CRG and the cubes at Gilboa, our development agreement laid out, and I've said this before, it's worth saying again, a valve exercising machine, a mini excavator and a trailer to pull it around. So we didn't light a ball field, but what we got were things that were going to make the water department's infrastructure easier to maintain, especially with the shortage of qualified individuals. A lot of the people that are working water systems around Massachusetts are older, so asking these guys to jump in a hole and do 100 turns on the valve, just to exercise that valve every single year is, and we have many, many, many valves, is just too much. And since that project required a large build-out of water department assets, it made sense to have the water department be the primary beneficiary of the development agreement.
Plus, they didn't ask for a tip, too.
Right, and they don't, they're not asking for one, at least at this point, and I don't think they should, because I don't think they'll get one. That's where we are with, with that proposal. This is an evolution. So we started off with a plan that called for two or three pretty large warehouses. One of them would probably have been in Sutton, the other two would have been almost entirely in Douglas. We went from that to why can't we do an energy campus and do a data center, and we needed to build out a business case, and we have spent months building out the business case, trying to determine what the market wants and what the folks here in town might tolerate as a digestible foray into the field of this type of energy independence. Yeah, the problem we're running into is our state government. State government is currently contemplating a regulation that will basically close the Everett Natural Gas Station and pretty much close off the flow of a lot of the natural gas that flows through the pipeline that goes through Douglas. Besides the ridiculousness of that proposal, what are your chances of proposing a new energy generation site that relies upon those resources getting through the Commonwealth? So the industry wants to be in Massachusetts, but doesn't feel that there's a friendly environment here, or a cost-effective environment. So any conversation we're having about data centers and energy are on a much, much smaller scale. There still might be such a proposal moving forward in Douglas, but it'd be so small, so much smaller compared to what we were contemplating before. So it kicked us back to, so what's going to happen with the sand and gravel pit? And it's not up to us, it's up to the ownership of those lots to negotiate who they want to work with and what price that party is willing to pay for their land. They've paid taxes on that land all these years, in cases of a couple of these families, generations, and so they've come to the table with this proposal because they have a suitor that they feel like they want to do business with. So that's where this has evolved from time, and we don't disclose every single thing that happens, because sometimes you go down paths that just end, and you just could try to go back to the intersection and get back on the main path and see where it takes you. And that's where we've been, and this has been a long journey. I think Bob Manerick scores additional brownie points for being able to keep it all straight in his head and not get flustered and upset with anybody for changing course. So the one thing I enjoy working with CRG is because they're highly reputable partners, and we're having conversations internally about what matters the most to us, and what matters the most to us is a firm foundation. A significant amount of engineering work needs to be put into exploring what is under the building, to make sure that it can drain as designed, because of all that water that's going to hit such a large roof, it's going to go to a subterranean chamber underneath part of the building or underneath the parking lot, and it needs to work properly. And the only way you're going to know that is if you don't import or use substandard materials, and that you test what you do at every step of the game. Once the foundation is firm, a lot of what's going to happen on top of it is going to be for engineers to design. I think sometimes folks don't realize, it's really fascinating to see such a huge thing. And for those of, I think, I think every member of the Board has at least seen parts of the cubes at Gilboa during construction or shortly after it was topped off, I think we had an event there. They're talking about something that's almost 100% bigger. So if you're off by a quarter of an inch on one end of this thing, you're going to be off by a lot more than a quarter of an inch at the end.
A hundred feet.
So people have to do really good engineering work, and so we're looking forward to learning the lessons that we learned from CRG and applying them to this, should it go forward.
This is a much better site as well, though.
It's a much better site.
You agree?
And, but it's old, right? So you never know what folks, whether it's tree stumps or, not really worried about landfill materials, just worried about natural materials, it may have been stockpiled in an area at one time and they deteriorate more rapidly and they have poorer quality soils than, than sand and gravel. But, so that's, that's the diatribe about that, but I wanted everybody to, one of the things that really, I don't want to say hurts our feelings, because that's kind of childish, but we try very hard to be transparent about everything we do, and we want people to understand that as soon as something is ready for primetime, we try to bring it right up to the public forefront. And so I'm going to respect their desire to comply with their confidentiality agreements and their nondisclosure agreements with the client for as long as possible, but we've told them it's, it can't be a secret. But, yeah, within a week or two, we really need to be able to tell people what's going on. So that's, that's the, the view from the Town Administrator's Office on that proposal. We've gotten in the appraisal report for 11 Gleason Court. I'm going to have to modify the RFP, I need to change the dates, obviously, because I need to post it and give it adequate time for advertisement. I'm also going to remove a lot of the exhibits. The appraiser's report is very, very thorough, I think it stands on its own, and we will refer people who are interested in some of the exhibits to the Selectmen's Office, and Lisa can provide people anything that they're interested in. So the environmental reports, the remediation reports, any historical documents, they can all be obtained, but we'll just include the appraiser's report. The appraiser came in with a fairly high value, and perhaps before we post this, we do have another meeting in two weeks, and we'll discuss this actually, because I think this is a decision for the Select Board. The appraiser's value on, on the real estate plus the building as it is, is $390,000. I think at one time, when I first started working for the town, the town was trying to get rid of this building for a dollar, and was perfectly willing to accept almost any offer, just to have the building saved and taken off the public rolls and put back under the property tax rolls. But looking at other school buildings that have been rehabilitated in other nearby communities within the relative same timeframe, Michael was able to come up, Mrs. Michael O'Hara came up with comps and generated a per square foot value that applied to 11 Gleason Court, gave us that, 390,000. I think the question presented to the Select Board is whether you'd be willing to accept less. If you are, you would have to enunciate or clearly define the reasons why. So let's say you, you say, well, if you're going to develop it for housing, we want 390, but if you're going to develop it for medical office or professional office, we'd take significantly less because we'd like to see a commercial purpose. That is a conversation you guys need to have. Clearly, my recommendation is in between the lines of this conversation, right? You, you want to sell it. If you come in with a really high base price, the law requires you to set that as the floor, unless you enunciate a clear reason why you want to be blow it. So that's, before I go to the market, I would like that issue clarified, and that'll be sent to you.
When are you looking to do that?
Two weeks. I mean, I can, me or Lisa can circulate the appraisers' report, but I, you're not going to learn much more than, than you already know.
Yeah.
So you just focus on the first four or five pages, the analysis that he went through and the steps he went through, and you'll see how he got to his number. Just in terms of what's going on in the marketplace, and I'm going to wrap up with this, Mr. Chairman, because it occupied my-- wrap up with this, Mr. Chairman, because it occupied my, some of my time during vacations, occupying a lot of my time now. Tomorrow morning, I'll get an update, which looks like a final report from CLA, which is the firm retained by the Town of Douglas Select Board, to review the financial standing of the Town of Douglas within the Massachusetts Strategic Health Group, which is our former health purchasing group. And, I believe they're arriving fairly quickly at a number that we can use as a baseline to track how much of the surplus remains in our trust fund. And just to manage people's expectations, I've put some big numbers out there in the past. This year, there was a certain amount of gamesmanship engaged in by different members of the board with different agendas, and the brokerage that took over with their agenda. And so I felt it prudent to, since they had denied our request to turn their, our surplus back to us, I felt it was prudent to accept a very low rate increase, because we would burn hot, we would actually spend more than we put in, and that would force them to basically cash out our surplus by honoring our bills, which to this date is what we've been doing. So, we're not looking at a million bucks, I'd be happy with 200,000, 250,000, because we didn't pass along any premium increases to employees or to the town's taxpayers this year by chewing through the existing surplus. We may not have done it in exactly this way, but for an entity that's struggling financially, this is the other part of the calculation, right? It made sense to draw down our surplus, because it increases the chances that they will cut us the check to get rid of the nuisance of talking to me. Right, rather than having to scrape together two or three weeks' worth of cash flow to cut us a check for a million and a half bucks, that just didn't seem like a realistic scenario. So, as far as I'm concerned, um, we're in a good place. While I was less than thrilled with the manner in which the most recent board member meeting was, um, conducted and filed an Open Meetings Act complaint against the chairman for the way he conducted the meeting, the reality is, we've been treated well, because we're in good standing, we had a surplus, we don't owe them anything, they owe us, and so they've honored their commitment to pay our run-out of claims, and so we're, we're whacking away at what's owed. Having said that, there's still the outstanding issue of pharmacy rebates that need to come back to us, that will probably increase the amount of surplus that was due to us. They've been less, uh, friendly with their rival brokerage, which happens to be our brokerage now, Alliant Insurance, in giving them records. So, CLA is the conduit for getting the records that Alliant needs to pursue issues around our pharmacy rebates and get all of this done. So it, it's a little bit convoluted, but I think we have successfully exited that arrangement. They have a board meeting scheduled, um, and their cash flow position is so poor that they're asking that all remaining members of their group, uh, pay a double premium next month, which, you know, I don't know about you, but one sign of financial stress is if your landlord calls you up and says, "I'm kind of hurting for cash, can you double your rent next month?"
And the back of your mind, I'm going to do for you next month, can you pay me now?
Cash, right? So, I don't know how naive these other board members are, they are incredibly naive and going along with foolishness, but we're out of it, so, but it gives you a sense of how strapped they are for cash, and why minimizing what they owe us may have been a worthwhile strategy.
So we're officially out.
We're, we have been since July 1. And the new program for employees, just so people understand quickly, is pretty much the same as what we had. There are some back-office things that are different, stop-loss is very different. But the employees interface now, the one thing that we added, because we could, is there's an app on people's phone called Health Wallet, and it has all the benefits made possible through our employee package, it's available through the app on the phone. So if they forget or lose track of something we've added for specific disease conditions or second opinion service or whatever, it's right there in front of them. It's not just an app, it's a phone number with a human being on the other end of it, so it's called Concierge Service, so you get a bad diagnosis, you're very upset, you're emotional, you call up your person who's going to manage your major case for you, and they say, "All right, so, we're going to go through your benefit package, we're going to make recommendations about specialists to see, hospitals to see, we'll help you set up those appointments." It's all going to be handled through a live voice on the other end of the phone, not AI, not offshore to India or China or some other place. So, I think that enhances the benefit for our peeps, and will help with our retention. We've going to have, now, an early disclosure to department heads of their available budget, probably during the month of October, with an eye towards what goes on at special town meeting, what's going to be a permanent add to their budget, which will not be, so that they can begin their plans. Actually, don't really see this conversation involving municipal departments very much at all. What I see, it's going to be a big conversation with the school department, and our education partners outside of Douglas, as well as some capital spending around some of the things that we think we can try to piece together a solution to the rapidly increasing cost of transportation, especially in the special education side. If the Town of Sutton can do it, we can do it. We need to be thoughtful about, our strategy needs to be very targeted and very narrow, we're not going to solve the whole issue with one policy decision. I think we've got the right team in place at the school department to be flexible enough to consider, let's do a pilot, let's see how this works for a year, and see if we can make it work with, um, sort of a limited targeted solution. But, I can tell you, I had 250 bucks a ride, it's 500 bucks a day, it's 2,500 dollars a week, it adds up really quickly, and it explains that budget line item that went up by 23% this year.
Yep.
It's not the big yellows, it's the smaller targeted services for specific students. So that's kind of where my thought process is right now, Mr. Chairman, so, thank you.
All right. All right, moving forward, uh, number 17, um, open session, any items, some topics not reasonably anticipated 40 hours prior? Any roundtable items or anything? All good. All right, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion by Mike, second by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.